I had to wait for my boss to tell me to stop. Good evening. This is the sixth meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council's now turned, called to order. If you please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Tom Harris from the Govens Presbyterian Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the pleasure of the legion. I have the wrong glasses on today, y'all.
Thank you. I believe one of the purposes of public prayer in this kind of setting is to articulate the deepest common desires of everybody present and everybody in the city. And some of those people don't believe. And so I, instead of offering a prayer to God, I want to just try to articulate our deepest common desires. And you can direct those in your own heart and mind to whoever or whatever you choose. I believe that our deepest common desires as we gather here are to listen to one another and to seek the common good of the city of Baltimore and all of its residents. I believe our deepest common desires are to work together for that common good and to have good faith in one another, that we are all here for that same purpose. I believe our deepest common desires are to seek prosperity for each resident of this city, to seek equal opportunity for each resident of this city regardless of their age, or their race, or their creed, or any other category. I believe our purpose is to seek just laws and good policy, so that those laws can be enforced with a minimum of violence. I believe that we are here to seek the best for all the residents of this city. And I hope that we can follow that purpose in everything you do tonight. Amen.
Amen.
A pleasure of allegiance to the flag of nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's Karen? All right. I was, I was trying to find out if we had a showcase.
No, I don't see them.
Camera, I need to see you right away. It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. No. Oh, roll call.
President Young, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark, Cohen, Mr. President, Wiva Quam.
Thank you. It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for motion to generalize the prayer. Moved by Councilman Henry, seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting, all those in favor of adopting, generalizing the prayer, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is approved. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings from February 27, City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
Most approve the journal. Most by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried and the journal is adopted. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0030, Tax Credit Citywide High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Extension of Eligibility for the Purpose of Extending the Date of Termination, the Date for Termination of the Tax Credit Program for Certain Newly Constructed or Converted Market Rate Rental Housing Projects, Conforming and Correcting Related Provisions and General Relating to Property Tax Credit. Sponsored by President Young, Middleton, Scott, Costello, Bullock, Pinkett, Henry, Cohen, Stokes, Clark, Schleifer, Riceinger.
Thank you. I'm introducing this bill to extend this tax credit for an additional five years. This tax credit has benefited a number of projects throughout the city, including Remington Row and the 12th District, the 3200 St. Paul Project in the 14th District, as well as projects in Hampden, Mount Washington, Jonestown, and around the city. And I want to thank my colleagues for co-sponsoring this tax credit bill to help development in our neighborhoods. This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0031, Zoning Nonconforming Junk Yards or Vehicle Dismantling Facilities Recyclable Materials Recovery Facilities for the Purpose of Amending City Code Article 32 as enacted by Ordinance 16581 to amend the definition of vehicle dismantling facility, modifying certain standards governing the use of lawful nonconforming vehicle dismantling facilities and lawful nonconforming junk or scrap storage yards, and to prohibit recycling materials recovery facilities from purchasing materials on-site from the public, clarifying and conform related language, providing for a special effective date and general relating to the zoning regulations and standards governing vehicle dismantling facilities, junk or scrap storage and yards, and recyclable materials recovery facilities. Sponsored by Riceinger, Middleton, Bullock, Dorsey, Henry, Cohen, Stokes, Sneed, Clark, Burnett.
Please note, Council President is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Council Vice Presi-- okay. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0032, Resoning 5717 and 5723 Hartford Road for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Properties on this 5717 and 5723 Hartford Road as outlined on Redditch and Company Platt from the R4 zoning district to the C2 zoning district and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by Cohen, Dorsey, Cohen.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution is introduced.
City Council Resolution 17-0013R, Request for State Action Ban the Box for College Applications for the Purpose of Calling on the state of Maryland to take all necessary steps to eliminate questions about criminal background for Maryland college applications to ensure that all Marylanders get a fair chance at improving themselves and their communities by pursuing a college education. Sponsored by Stokes, Middleton, Scott, Costello, Burnett, Bullock, Pinkett, Dorsey, Henry, Cohen, Sneed, Clark, Riceinger, Schleifer.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank my colleagues for supporting this bill. This particular bill has already been introduced by delicate Maggie McIntosh in Indianapolis, HB 694. And we are asking in support of that bill to remove that particular question asking those persons about their criminal, criminal acti-- I mean criminal record, so that they have opportunities to go to school. And I would like to make a--
You want to suspend the rules.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for immediate adoption of the resolution.
Seconded by Councilman Henry, all of the favors suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I also would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
All in favor of adopting resolution, there's a second, seconded by Councilman Burnett. All in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0013R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried and this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 17-0014R, Stormwater Remediation Fee Oversight Committee for the Purpose of Calling on the Creation of a Stormwater Remediation Fee Oversight Committee, including Representatives from Citizens and Stakeholders Impacted by Stormwater Management Efforts, as well as City Agencies Involved in Stormwater Management and Mitigation. Sponsored by Costello, Middleton, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Pinkett, Dorsey, Henry, Cohen, Sneed, Clark, Schleifer, Stokes.
Please note, Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a continuation of work that the council started last term along with Councilman Jim Craft and myself. I want to thank the Department of Public Works, Marsha and Kristen, and specifically Director Chow for being a partner in this and working with the council on this. And look forward to this committee and its oversight and work with DPW to advance stormwater initiatives in the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution 17-0015R, Investigative Hearing Water Billing for the Purpose of Requesting that the Department of Public Works and Department of Finance brief the City Council on Water Affordability for Customers of Baltimore's Bureau of Water and Wastewater. The new water billing system started in October 2016 and concerns raised by customers of the Bureau of Water and Wastewater regarding unusually high bills, missing bills, and the process to contest bills. Sponsored by President Young, Stokes, Middleton, Scott, Costello, Burnett, Bullock, Dorsey, Henry, Cohen, Sneed, Schleifer, Riceinger.
Thank you. I want to thank all my co-sponsors for this bill. As most of you know, we've all been getting numerous calls about the high water bills that some people are receiving throughout the city of Baltimore, and also the fact that they cannot come down to a hearing that used to take place in the Water Department. So we're going to make sure that the public is very aware of this bill. And I want them to be here so that we can hear some of the problems that they have with this new monthly billing. So I want to thank, again, my co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. You can find the Consent Calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar? Moved by Councilman Costel-- Councilman Cohen, seconded by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving the Consent Calendar, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried and this calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like permission for floor privileges.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Council Vice President Middleton's guests, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried and your guests may take the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to have Patricia Ann Roberts to come up, please.
And all of us are very familiar with MEQ, the Municipal Employees Credit Union of Baltimore City, that has helped many members and employees of Baltimore City. And I thought that, you know, we had to honor a person that, basically, I have grown to know her personally. She's a very personal friend. But Patricia has, she's an example of what we would like to see continue throughout this wonderful city of Baltimore. And I have a little bio that I, that I want to read. And Patricia Ann Roberts is retiring with 42 years of service in one place. So that alone is phenomenal. Patricia Roberts was the Vice President of Membership Services and Branch Operations for MEQ, Baltimore's Credit Union. Ms. Roberts has been the ME-- has been with MEQ since 1974, when she started as a teller. She worked her way up at MEQ, serving as the lending receptionist, then loan officer, then supervisor of loan processing. She was appointed to her current position in 1994. In 1996, Ms. Roberts implemented cash processing for the MEQ branches, a major change in how the organization served its members. She is also the longest-serving member of MEQ's credit committee, which oversees and approves member loan requests that don't meet, that don't meet standard underwriting guidelines. So she has helped many people in need and people in poverty. Ms. Roberts received her AA degree from the Community College of Baltimore and has continued her education through the Credit Union Executive Society CEO Institute, completing programs at Cornell University, the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania, and the Darden School of Business at the University of Virginia. A recent accomplishment for Ms. Roberts, of which she is especially proud, is the development and opening of MEQ's student branch. The branch is run by students of the National Academy of Finance, and all the student tellers undergo the same rigorous training as regular MEQ tellers. The student branch was first opened in October 2008 at the, at Digital Harbor High School, where the National Academy Foundation was located. This past fall, they moved to their own branch in the former Clifton Park High School, and Ms. Roberts managed the move of the branch to the new location. Active in her community, Ms. Roberts served on the mayor's task force under Mayor Kurt Smoak's administration in 1999, and served on the Board of Directors for the Baltimore City Employees Retirement System. Ms. Roberts currently sits on the Board of Directors for the YWCA Greater Committee, Executive Committee, and the Fundraising Committee. Ms. Roberts is a member of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. She also currently serves as a board member of the Baltimore Chapter of the Maryland and DC Credit Union Association. Ms. Roberts and her daughter Chelsea, Chelsea, stand up there, there's her daughter Chelsea, attend St. Gregory, the Great Church. They are both active members of the Willing Workers and provide help with the soup kitchen. They live in the Ashburton community, where Ms. Roberts have served on the Ashburton Homeowners Association. The councilman of the 7th District shares the Ashburton community with me, and I would like you to come up so we can present this citation to Pat. And the City Council Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers this sincerest congratulations to Patricia A. Roberts in recognition of 42 years of dedicated customer service to the Municipal Employees Credit Union, its members, and the city of Baltimore. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the 6th day of March 2017, signed by President Bernard Jack Young, and Sharon Green Middleton, and all members. And congratulations to you. And I, I know you have started already some travels and so on, enjoying your next phase in life. But this, Patricia is an example. She, she was born and raised in Baltimore. She, you know, went to school in Baltimore.
They're not going to give her loan before she leave.
She's, I mean, she is, you know, just, and I just thought it was just, you know, noteworthy to, for this recognition. So now I would like you to say a few words. Thank you.
Just give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It is truly a privilege, a privilege to be honored by the City Council for my 42 years. Well, short of one month, short of 43 years at Municipal Employees Credit Union, serving the Baltimore community has been a blessing for me. And I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. And we, you definitely warrant a frame. And this, the council was out of frame, so one is, one is coming. Thank you.
Tell her to leave. We'll, we'll get it from her.
Oh, you, you want to take a picture?
And if you go to the credit union, you're talking about customer service. That's Ms. Customer Service right there. Always have a great smile on her face, welcoming you to the credit union. And you can't go. We're going to, we're going to do a resolution to say that you can't go. But it's been a pleasure, you know, working with you, coming to the credit union, seeing that smile. And we're going to miss you there. But always know that, you know, we look at you as the credit union. You know, you're the longest, you're the longest-serving. Am I correct? Okay. Well, I know that when I first joined the credit union, you was one of the first person that I seen. And that smile and that great customer service, I told everybody else, you got to go join MEQ. And it was because of you. So we really appreciate you. And thanks again for your service.
Wow. Congratulations. All right. We'll now move the bills on second reader.
City Council Bill 17-0018, Labor and Employment City Minimum Wage for the Purpose of Setting Baltimore City's Minimum Wage Rate for the Years 2019 through 2023. Setting the Form to Determine Baltimore City's Minimum Wage Rate from 2023 onward, repealing certain, repealing certain exemptions, repealing certain exceptions, creating certain exceptions, defining certain terms, setting the terms and qualifications for Wage Commission. Members requiring the production and posting of multilingual posters summarizing Baltimore City's Minimum Wage Laws, setting Baltimore City's tip minimum wage rate, setting Baltimore City's small employee, small employer minimum wage through 2026, limiting the withholdings employers may make from employee wages, allowing any person to make a complaint to the Wage Commission, changing the Wage Commission's procedures for responding to complaints, repealing the prohibition of bad faith employee complaints to the Wage Commission, establishing certain penalties, clarifying conform related provisions, and general relating to the minimum wage to be paid to employees in Baltimore City.
Chair recognizes Chairwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Wednesday, March 1st. At this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Clark, to the lead sponsor of the bill, for comments.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. President, members, special thanks to the Chair of the Committee for a valiant chairing of the March 1st hearing, and very fair indeed. Today's the day I've waited for a long time, on behalf of Baltimore City. $15 is a minimal wage, really, for even a single person to survive on in Baltimore City. But getting there, or starting down the path to that goal, is significant in bringing our city together. There are lots of ways to be brought together. And one of them is economic equity. We have built a harbor. We have built a tourist industry. We have expanded and are doing well. We are in a time where our growth is double that of the state's, where we have 12,000 new jobs since 2014. It is time now to share the wealth to the working people who have helped create it. And that's what this bill is about. So thank you to all my colleagues. I know that we all best, wish the best for all of our fellow workers, however we may be positioned about this legislation. But I hope that we will maintain our majority in bringing us here into the 21st century and bringing our city closer together in fairness and equity. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairwoman Sneed.
Yes, the amendments are on everyone's desk, so I move the amendments.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I have three amendments I would like to be considered.
Is there a second? Motion fails for a second. One second. Seconded by Councilman Costello.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, the pages are handing out the amendments now.
Okay.
You don't, you don't need a second.
Oh, okay. So while the amendments are being handed out, according to the 2015 Baltimore City Food Environment Report, more than 25% of city residents live in a food desert. And while that's bad enough, when I look at the 7th District, that number goes up to 47.6% of the residents in the 7th District live in a food desert. In addition, in the 7th District, compared to white residents, African-Americans are approximately five times more likely to live in a food desert. Hispanic residents are approximately three and a half times more likely to live in a food desert. More than 5,000 children live in a food desert. More than 2,000 seniors live in a food desert. Knowing about the grocery industry, profit margins are about 2%. An increase of wages at this level greatly inhibits an ability to address this critical need for food access. And so I'd like to present an amendment which reads as the following. On page 13 before line 27, insert H. Supermarkets and Food Desert Incentive Areas. Employees of any supermarket whose closure the Health Commissioner determines will create a food desert as defined by City Code Article 28, Section 1030, Food Desert Incentive Areas, Personal Property Tax Credit, are exempt from the minimum wage requirement of this division. I'd like to make a motion for that amendment.
All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion fails.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for my second amendment, which also reads on page 13 before line 27, insert Food Retailers Accepting SNAP Benefits. Employees of any retailer authorized by the United States Department of Agriculture to accept Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits are exempt from the minimum wage requirements of this division. I'd like to make a motion for that amendment.
Seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. President. In my district and citywide, apprenticeship programs are key to moving people from minimum wage to wages where they can actually support their family. So in support of apprenticeship programs, I'm making a motion for the amendment, for this amendment, on page 13 before line 27, insert H. Apprenticeships. Apprentices participating in an apprenticeship program that is registered with and approved by the Maryland Department of Labor, Licensing, and Regulation, or the United States Department of Labor are exempt from the minimum, minimum wage requirements of this division. I'd like to make a motion for this amendment.
Seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the, I would like to introduce two amendments. The, the first one is, and I guess I'll be passing it around, is any employers of small businesses, like in the first bill that was proposed last session, that small businesses would be exempt. And the reason why I propose this is after studying up on all these issues, I found, and I also read, that 89% of all small businesses already are paying their employees above the minimum wage. And so, you know, I like to reward good behavior and not punish those who are trying to create jobs and start businesses. And as somebody who's created jobs and started businesses on my, myself, as well as, you know, somebody who, who doesn't pay anybody below $15 currently, I just say that we have a lot of startups in our town that want to create jobs and want to get things moving. And during those first years, you know, it's really tough to get things going. And at times, you have your initial employees and, and the owners themselves start off making little to no money. And, and I'm, I just fear that, you know, requiring any startup to have to pay this minimum wage would prevent them from starting these companies, as well as being able to get out of that initial period. So I'd like to make a motion to exempt small businesses from, from this bill.
Seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. It fails.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the next one I'd like to propose would be any, plain and simple, any employee who's working 20 hours or less to also be exempt from this bill.
Seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of this amendment, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion fails. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three floor amendments, which I would like to be considered as a floor package, as one package, Mr. President. First two have to do with essentially a pause on the bill. The first one specifically has to do with the non-seasonally adjusted Consumer Price Index for the Baltimore, Columbia, and Towson statistical area. If growth is not seen through that indicator at the beginning of the year, then a pause would be put on it. The second one is similar in nature, the only exception being if the unemployment rate were to rise above 6.4%, then a pause would go into effect. You know, we were made certain guarantees during the deliberations of this bill, that it would not have a negative economic impact on the city. And this is a way to ensure that. And third, we, we talked a lot about the competitiveness and how this bill would impact Baltimore City's competitiveness with the surrounding counties. The third thing is similar to an amendment I introduced last time in 2016, that this bill would not go into effect until at least one of the following three counties implemented a $15 an hour minimum wage by 2023. And those three counties, it would have to be one of them, are Baltimore County, Howard County, and Anne Arundel County. Mr. President, I'd like to move all three amendments as one package.
Is there a second? Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Chairwoman Sneed.
Yes. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as a--
You got to use your mic. Chair recognize, excuse me, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. I'm sorry.
Sorry. My, my apology, Madam Chair, and Mr. President. I have an amendment which is technical in nature, but very important to the subject of it. And it is actually my amendment in adding Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor of-- this legislation. Do I have a second?
Second by Councilwoman Milton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Council Stokes should be added as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman, I mean Council Chairman Sneed.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Can I have a motion not to have a roll call? Second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Huh? Oh, we have to do it? Okay, we have to do the roll call according to the parliamentary.
President Young.
I vote yes.
President Young, yes. Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Schleifer, no. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Pinkett?
No.
Councilman Pinkett, no. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Reissinger?
Yes.
Councilman Reissinger, yes. Councilman Costello?
No.
Councilman Costello, no. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. 12, yes. Three, no.
Thank you. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 16-0001, sale of property, 823 through 825 North Mount Street, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, at the public or private sale, all to interest in certain property located at 823 through 825 North Mount Street and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0002, city property naming the park located at 1900 through 2100 North Mount Royal Terrace, Lady Baltimore Park, for the purpose of naming the park located at 1900 through 2100 North Mount Royal Terrace, Lady Baltimore Park. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0012, sale of property, 217 North Pine Street, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, at the public or private sale, all to interest in certain property known as 217 North Pine Street and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Dorsey, Henry, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0013, sale of property, 907 and a half North Fremont Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, at the public or private sale, all to interest in certain property known as 907 and a half North Fremont Avenue and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0014, sale of property, WS Scott Street, 94 feet, North Carroll Street, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, at the public or private sale, all to interest in certain property known as WS Scott Street, 94 feet, North Carroll Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0017, building fire related codes, international residential code corrections, for the purpose of expressly continuing the regulation of solar photovoltaic power systems for all one and two-family dwellings and expressly reinstating the application of certain regulations governing driveways and other paid services for all one and two-family dwellings. President Young, Cohen, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0020, building codes demolition permit fees, for the purpose of modifying, for the purpose of modifying the maximum permit fee for the demolition of structures. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Please note that the mayor will present her State of the City address on Thursday, March 16th, at 3:00 PM in the council chambers, so all council people make sure that you... I'm just skipping all over everything. Okay, let's back up. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Reissinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, I suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3.
All those in favor of suspended rules announced in here, we say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Reissinger.
The Land District Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0021 on Wednesday, April 5th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is the Baltimore City Zoning Code Legalization and Corrections. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 17-0017 on Wednesday, April 12th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional use parking, off-street garage located at 1,000 South Alwood Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 17-0006R on Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, at 12 noon, at the request of Councilman Scott. This is funding for the consent decree between the Baltimore City Police Department and the US DOJ. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing that day as well, on Tuesday, April 4th, for Bill 17-0010R at 11:00 AM. This is an investigative hearing on Baltimore City Police Staffing, Recruitment, and Retention at the request of Council President Young. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a publicly televised hearing on Bill 17-0015R on Monday, March 27th, at 5:00 PM. Oh, pardon me, I need to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules announced in here, we say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
This is for Bill Number 17-0015R, publicly televised hearing, Monday, March 27th, at 5:00 PM. Investigative hearing on water billing at the request of Council President Young. And judiciary, just a reminder, there will be a hearing tomorrow on Bill 16-0003. This was already announced. It will be at 11:00 AM. This is at the request of Councilman Stokes and Council President Young. This is city property renaming Oliver Community Center Playground to Calvin B. Scrugg Senior Playground. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, colleagues, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing also on Tuesday, April 4th, at 1:00 PM for Council Resolution 17-007R, reviving the Baltimore Police Cadet Program, where we requested the Director of Finance to release some of their frozen police positions to restart the Baltimore Police Cadet Program. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will have a legislative oversight community walkthrough on Friday, March 17th, 2017, 3:30 PM, as a part of our complete public safety plan, starting at the corners of Pratt and Monroe Street. That's again Friday, March 17th, at 3:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Education and Youth Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on March 23rd at 5:00 PM to investigate educational resources for immigrant youth. As we know, there was a recent ICE raid in Highland Town, which resulted in the detention of two Baltimore citizens. The result has been to push many families underground. We've had parents tell us they're afraid to send their children to school. That is completely unacceptable, and we want to clarify with our school system some of the resources that are available for our immigrant families, because we cannot afford to have them miss out on school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements? All right, this is a committee announcement. Please note that the mayor will present her State of the City address on Thursday, March 16th, at 3:00 PM in the council chambers, asking all council members to please be on time. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. Okay, you trying to jump ahead of me?
No, no, I didn't say anything.
Regular announcements. I'm gonna make you laugh.
Yes, sir.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for all 54 people that have been murdered in the city of Baltimore this year. And I also rise to say that over the last week, we know that we had an investigation come to light involving Baltimore police officers that once again shined the light on why we need the reforms that everyone in this body and every elected official in the city of Baltimore asked for, but this is what reform looks like. Reform isn't a gift. It isn't a present. It's not gonna look pretty. The only way that we're going to improve our police department is to do exactly what happened last week. And I know that myself and my committee, we have made the police commission aware that we want to review the overtime slips for commanders, not in people in specialized unit, not just for this year, but for the last three years, so that we can get a better sense of what's going on and see a better and track abuse. So please rest assured, citizens of Baltimore, that our committee will hold the police department accountable for their overtime and continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, I'd like to request a moment of silence for the untimely passing of a great citizen of Baltimore and a good friend, Mr. Darrell Zaslow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more announcements? Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton also lists Calvin Young, Sr., who passed away as soon as it was today, happened to be my uncle, so I want a moment of silence for him. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, March 20th, 2017, and we would like a moment of silence for Esther Grossman, the wife of Sid, which is our City Hall greeter. She passed away on March 1st. Also, a moment of silence to the uncle of Council President Young, Calvin Young, Sr., and also to the families that have lost their loved ones through the recent fires that we have been having in the city, and also the 54 deaths to violence.
In closing, I would like to wish Mayor Catherine Pugh an early happy birthday. Her birthday is March 10th. There been no further business before this council. This concludes the sixth meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.